So, welcome everyone. My name is Athena Paquette Cormier and I am your moderator for tonight. Welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidates Forum for Lawndale Elementary School Board. And before I say anything more, I want to introduce our league president Pamela Thornton, who's going to do some opening remarks about the league and then I'm going to tell you about the rules for this evening's forum. Welcome Pamela.
Good evening and thank you. Welcome to tonight's candidate forum hosted by the League of Women Voters of Torrance area. This is an opportunity for residents to hear about your local election. Again, my name is Pamela Thornton and I'm the current president of the League of Women Voters of Torrance area. We are locally serving the community of Gardena, Harbor Gateway, Carson, Harbor City, Lomita, and Torrance. The League of Women Voters does not support or oppose any candidate or any political party. The League of Women Voters encourages informed and active participation in government. We work to increase the understanding of major public policy and influence public policy through education and advocacy. To find more, to find more about us and our upcoming events, please see our website online at www.lwvtorrancearea.org. If you would like to join our mailing list, you can text to 444-999 and enter keyword LWVTA and you will be added to our mailing list. And also, I would like to include if you need help with your ballot, you can visit votersage.org for all your election information, including all the ballot measures and candidate information. So, thank you again for joining us and I would like to thank our moderator Athena Paquette Cormier and our voter services director Monica Fredericks for coordinating our candidate forums. Thank you and enjoy tonight's candidate forum.
Thanks Pamela. Okay, so first I want to start with how we're going to work it with the candidates and then give you some ground rules for both the candidates and our viewing audience. Okay, so the order of candidates was drawn by lot. So, if we were in a big room, you'd gather around, pick a number. So, we skipped that. I just, since I don't know you, I just went to one, two, three, four, right? And in actuality, it doesn't matter who goes first, second, third, because as I ask the questions, I'm going to rotate through. So, you all get a chance to answer first, second, third. So, you're never in the hot seat over and over again and you're never last over and over again. So, so that kind of keeps it fresh. Let's see. And then, I think that is it. So, the order of the candidates. So, candidate number one or in first seat, if you will, is Mr. Morales. Then, number two is Mr. Church. Number three is Ms. Burris. And then, number four is Mr. Gamboa. So, Mr. Morales will go first with the question. The questions were set up as a two-minute opening remarks and then a two-minute closing remarks. So, the two-minute opening remarks, we're starting with Mr. Morales and at the end, I'm going to go down the other way. So, four, five, three, two, one. Okay, so, and then the, all the questions from the audience that we got will be one minute each. So, Monica's our timer and the way the timing works is your two-minute question, she'll, she'll count down at the one-minute sign, at the 30-second sign, at the 15-second sign, and then when it says stop, you're supposed to stop. Now, you don't necessarily have to stop mid-sentence, right? You just finish your sentence. But no, like run on, add on, and, 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 and it turns into another minute, right? So, we want to be respectful of the other candidate's time and the audience. We want to get as many questions in as we can. And if there's something you didn't get to complete or had more thoughts, you can always use your closing remarks to, to finish that thought out. So, that's for the one-minute question, for the two-minute question. The one-minute question, she's just going to give you 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and then the stop. Okay, so for the ground rules, the league does not, so this is not a debate, it's a forum. So, you're not debating each other, you're talking to your constituents and saying what you think you will do in office, right? So, it's very different than the kinds of debates you might observe out there in the outside world, outside of the League of Women Voters. So, the candidates will not refer to each other by name, but speak in the first person. No personal attacks will be allowed. We want to hear what the candidates think they will do in office or their policy thoughts, not what they think of the other candidate, what they've done right or wrong, or their haircut, or anything else. So, always speak about your own, your own thoughts. And then, no talking over each other. This is much easier with Zoom than it was in a, in a room because there's such a temptation to, to jump in, right? So, in Zoom now, we're muted. So, this is helpful because also, we would prefer that you stay muted. As soon as you're done talking, mute yourself because what tends to happen is if you don't mute yourself and say your cat meows, or your kid run by, now all of a sudden, your picture's on the screen, but your other candidate's speaking and that looks really weird, especially if it's male and female, it gets really kind of psycho, right? So, we want to mute ourselves so that the picture and the voice match and also that there's no background noise. Okay, and the candidates will always address the moderators. So, if you have a question or you want clarification, just go ahead and ask me. And then, just so the public knows, you've all signed in agreement to obey, to observe the rules of the league, right? Okay. Now, one other thing, we are recording this. So, if we're going to send it directly out to the candidates and to the, the nice PTA lady who's our partnership and we want to thank the PTA president who's been so active. Her name is Ne, Ne, and I can't remember her full name, but thank you, Madam President, for bringing this together with us. So, this is being recorded. We're going to send it directly to the candidates and the PTA president. And then, it will be available in a couple of days on our YouTube channel. So, you can always send people to the YouTube channel or our website. I mean, it will be everywhere. So, you can sign, send people to it. Okay, so now to our constituents who are here. Thank you very much for joining us. So, the chat room is live. We do have quite a few questions, but if there's room or time for more, then we will take some from the chat room. But keep in mind that the chat room is like the auditorium. And during the auditorium, the, there should be a certain decorum. So, if there's any, you know, they call them trolls, you know, any mean-spiritedness, bad language, you know, just fussing for no reason, then Pamela does have the authority to bounce you out of the chat room. So, you'll be gone. You'll have to watch the video, okay? Because we want to be respectful of everybody involved in this. So, I think that's it. Okay, and one more thing about the, the timing candidates. So, if you don't use up your whole minute, you can't carry that minute over to another minute, right? There's no, there's no minutes carryover like the cellphone. And you can't yield it to your opponent either. That would be nice, right? Give them more time. But we don't do any of that. So, if you don't use up the whole minute, that's fine. But sometimes I feel like someone says something in five seconds, I might ask a follow-up question just to get you to use your time and express who you are and what you think you would do in office. So, with that said, we are going to get started. And I just want to make sure that Monica is ready. Excellent. Thank you Monica. And then Pamela's ready to watch the chat room. And if you have any questions about anything, just put them in there because often we can answer your questions for you. So, if it's about voting or anything like that, she can, she'll monitor that. Okay, so we are now going to start with the two-minute opening remarks and we are starting with Mr. Morales. And don't forget to unmute yourself.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Adi Morales. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters of Torrance and the Lawndale Council PTA for hosting this forum and everyone else who took some of their precious time to listen to all candidates. I am currently, I currently have the honor to be the board member trustee for Area Five. I am an educator with over 17 years of experience and I have a great passion for public education and experience at the front line. I have taught lower grades, upper grades, middle school, school. And this school year, I am teaching fourth grade Spanish dual immersion. My formal education is at Bachelor's of Arts in Liberal Studies and a Master's of Arts in Education from Cal State Omega Hills. My family and I have lived in Lawndale for over 20 years. My children are a product of our local schools and my family and I are very proud of that. My children were in the same schools, same classrooms, and probably the same teachers as your children. So, I understand why you value the best education possible. I truly believe that through collaboration with team of excellent board members, including myself and district leaders, we will continue assessing our policies that we have in place to ensure all students continue receiving a high-quality education. I want to continue working together with all stakeholders to maintain our educational vision and priorities in the best interest of our students. I am committed to pursuing a culture of trust and respect. I have experience and background that helps me know and understand what is the best for our students. I will make the best decisions so our children achieve high and are successful in this society. I am running for school board because I believe we can continue supporting every student in our district and it is also a way to give back to the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you sir. Didn't realize I was talking and I was muted. Thank you sir. So, next we have Mr. Church who will do his two-minute opening remarks.
Thank you. Thank you, League of Women Voters and the PTA of Lawndale for hosting this and everybody here just joining in to participate and hear from all of the candidates. My name is Brandon Church. I am running for Lawndale School Board Trustee Area Five. I grew up in Los Angeles and have lived here in Lawndale for going on eight or nine years along with my wife, who is a local educator. I am a parent of a first grader who attends William Green Elementary School. A little bit about my background, I've served a little over 12 years in the corporate sector and the video game industry, commanding multimillion-dollar projects of various degrees for all the, almost that entire time, serving as executive producer and executive director of production. Some of the companies I worked at were Konami and Sony, which you may have heard of. I left that when my daughter was born because I wanted to be a stay-at-home parent and really kind of, kind of spend some time with her as she was growing up. And that led me to creating a couple of companies, one of which is a nonprofit here in Lawndale that is focused on cultivating creative service-oriented projects from kids in our own neighborhoods. And this experience itself showed me that I wanted to do more. So, when my daughter was in preschool at Pace, which has a site right there on the William Green campus, I was involved there. I was their site president and treasurer and went down to all of the meetings downtown and then came back and relayed all of that information to the parents and the teachers there. And I want to do the same thing here at Lawndale. I'm running because I think it's important to uplift parent voices. You know, as I mentioned, my daughter's a part of this district and it's absolutely, absolutely essential, in my opinion, for parent voices to be heard. And not only be heard, but be heard by people who have a stake in the same outcome. You know, we all are here together. We want to grow together and see our children thrive. And I think it's important in about time that someone on the board is also a parent. It's important to me to maintain transparency, elevate parent concerns, and increase community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you sir. Now, Ms. Burris, we'd love to hear from you and your two-minute opening remarks.
Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Kathy Burris and I represent the trustee area number three. And for the last 12 years, I've been a proud member of the, the board of Lawndale Elementary School. Like I said, I served for 12 years. So, I believe that we're a successful district because we are a very stable board. We work well together. We have a commitment to academic and emotional needs of all our students. Our district is made up of preschool through eighth-grade students. We come from a wide range of ethnic and socio-economical and racial backgrounds. So, because of this, it's important that we find and utilize all the educational and financial resources to support our students. And I believe that our board has done that. But I'm also proud to say that the last two years, Mark Twain Elementary School and Anderson and Jane Adams Middle School received recognition for their excellence in closing the achievement gap. I'm also pleased six years ago when the community passed a parcel tax for our schools and the district used the funds to upgrade our technology and improve the systems for the support devices, which consequently, when school closed last March, all third through eighth grade students were given devices for distance learning. Additionally, devices were purchased over the summer for kindergarten through second grade. So, equity for all. I just want to say that I want to continue my work that I've been doing for the last 12 years and I promise that I am still dedicated to continuing working with the children and to ensure that they have equitable and quality education. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gamboa.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I unmuted myself.
We can hear you now.
Okay. Ready?
Yeah.
Yes. Hi, everybody. Thank you, everybody that, that helped support put this candidate forum on. My name is Miguel Gamboa. I'm running for Lawndale School Board for parent, to increase parent and community voice. I am a parent of three children in the district, two at Mark Twain and one at Rogers. I am involved in the community, coaching youth baseball and basketball in Lawndale. I have a bachelor's degree from San Diego State. I have a master's degree in education from Loyola Marymount University. I have worked in schools the last 15 years and counting with a proven track record of increasing, increasing student achievement. Under my leadership, I've led the turnaround of two low-performance schools into top-performance schools. I understand the operation of schools inside and out. I have been a teacher, a dean of students, overseeing culture and instruction and assistant principal, principal, instructional coach the last 15 years. As a parent, my wife and I have always supported the local PTA. It's time for new faces and new innovative ideas in Lawndale. We need to create partnerships and pipelines for our students with local large companies such as SpaceX and Northrop Grumman. There are also future opportunities with brand-new, brand-new stadium that was just opened less than 10 minutes away. We need to advocate for our school community, school community so that our students are not left out. We must support our teachers and staff that educate our children. As a school administrator, I have managed budgets, have coached teachers to improve their instruction, have provided professional development, have written curriculum, lesson plans, and I have, and I've also, and worked closely with school board to understand the need for fiscal accountability. I have served, I served five years in the United States military and completed two, two tours in the Middle East during 9/11. These experiences and many more give me a unique perspective on providing leadership as we look to continue to improve our schools in Lawndale. Nothing is more important than education, as well as redesigning our schools to be accountable, effective, and efficient in years and decades ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, our first question is going to go to Mr. Church. He's candidate number two. So, he goes first this time and I'll keep rotating just like that. So, remember who you go behind or ahead of so you know you're coming up on your turn. Okay, so, Mr. Church, do you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or as a representative of the school system?
I see myself as a representative of the community. As I mentioned, I'm a parent here. I have a child who is enrolled. And I believe that hearing from the community is, is essential to be able to do the job of a board member effectively. You have to know all of the problems, all of the concerns that are going on so that you can address them in a timely manner. I think that being a member of the board really forces you to engage with the community. And I think that we should be doing a lot more to speak with them, hearing from them in as many ways as we possibly can, creating forums where they can come and speak directly to us and express themselves and what they're going through and what concerns they have so that we can try to direct the council to create, to fix them. So, I'm absolutely a member of the community.
Okay, thank you. So, next we have Ms. Burris answering the same question.
Okay, well, I'm definitely a member of the community. We have to remember that we are identified with the community. We are elected by the community. We need to represent them to listen to their voice. So, we need to listen to the community, the staff, the parents. And then, after all of that is brought together, our job as a trustee is then to make the right choice for every student in our schools. So, yes, we are a member of the community, but, and we do have to listen to them, but we do also have to ultimately do the right thing for all of our students, all of our students, to make our schools great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have Mr. Gamboa.
And just to, if you could repeat the question, please?
Sure. Do you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or a representative of the school system?
I want to echo what Mr. Church said in regards of the community and parent and community voice and how important it is to have, to have, to be visible, to be out there, to be, you know, asking parents on a, on a consistent, regular basis, bringing the community together. So, I see myself as a representative of the community, obviously. Very proud to live in Lawndale, very proud to have my kids in the schools. My son just started Rogers. Many parents in sixth grade in the community take their students elsewhere. I did not when I did have other options. So, I really believe in the community. And also, the other end of it is at, at the same time, using the experience and looking at the data, the student achievement data, the suspension data, the fiscal accountability to make decisions and, and, and provide interventions for the community so that there is improvement and it's not stagnant. It's growing over time and there's an outlook in preparing our students for the future, which is super important. And that needs to be a representation of both.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Morales. Mr. Morales, can you unmute yourself? And Monica, make sure you restart his time.
I forget to, I'm here myself sometimes. Yes, thank you. Most definitely, you know, before anything else, I am a parent. Like I said before, I have lived here in, in Lawndale for over 20 years. And before I am a teacher or anything else, I am a parent and I know and understand the value of public education. And that's why I'm here, to serve the public, to serve my community. I want to be the voice, the voices, the eyes, to help them and make sure that, you know, they, that there's, their children get what they need, you know, so we can all be successful and we can do great things for our community, of course. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, a lot, some of the questions that are on my list have been answered. So, Pamela, if you can start looking for a couple of questions from the audience, I think we'll have time for it from what I can tell. Okay, so next we start with Ms. Burris. You're going to take this question first. So, get yourself ready. Let's see. Okay. What has your experience with distance learning been? And what is your plan to improve it for the families that struggle with it every day?
Okay, well, distance learning has been difficult. We had, it was really crazy last year, but distance learning this year, I believe that we've done an excellent job. We need to find engaging activities. We, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought here. I apologize.
That's okay.
We, our distance learning has been very engaging. Our students are, there, we need to monitor what they're doing. We need to make sure that everything is going well. We need to make sure that our parents are engaged and understand. We need to support our teachers especially because this is a very, very difficult time. So, we, we just need to find more ways to engage our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Gamboa, you're going to take this question next.
Do I start?
Yep.
Okay. So, in, in my, my experience as a current educator, I was right smack in the middle of everything, having to make a lot of tough decisions about what's, what's going to happen, having to stay current with all the LA County policies, all the health, how to open back up. The summer was very hectic, a lot of planning, a lot of hard work that went into ensuring our students were going to be successful. I really appreciate all the hard work that all the teachers have put in and all the parents. I know it's been a struggle. I myself, working from home, just like all the educators with three students, with three kids at home, it was definitely a challenge. But at the end of the day, listening to parents, listening to educators, to the teachers, and hearing their input allowed me to make some very strong and very important and strong decisions that allowed everybody to prosper.
Thank you. So, Mr. Morales, you get this question next. Please unmute yourself, Mr. Morales. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you so much. I have to say that my heart goes out to all the classroom teachers, our students, and parents who every day have to make distance learning a success. I don't think that one person in this world was ready for that. We have to continue working with, making sure our children have access to internet, but most important, a stable connection. Make sure that they have the technology, including software and hardware. We have to better support our working families, our homeless families. Some of those are, have been forgotten, you know, and families who do not speak or have limited proficiency in English, by providing them with the proper training and resources. Now, it will be up to everyone to see the tools that are at their disposal. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Now you can mute yourself. And Mr. Church, you get the question next.
Distance learning has been difficult. I have a child in first grade and it has definitely been challenging. You know, there's internet drop-off, there's power outages. Today, there was a lot of sign-in problems with class link. The list just goes on and on. But I got to give credit to the teachers. They have been doing everything that they possibly could to, to make this as smooth as possible for all of the students during this difficult time. But absolutely more can be done. I remember at the last board meeting, there was a parent who came on who had mentioned that he has a special, a student with special needs and that he may need a little bit more extra attention. I think stuff like that can be addressed. More and more of that with the homeless population and, and students who just have little bit of extra needs, we should be trying to facilitate and find ways to help them as much as we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, the next question goes to Mr. Gamboa first. And you might as well unmute yourself now while I'm reading. What are some needs that must be priorities for our school district?
Needs that, that must be priority for the school district? I, I think if I were to, so, we need to have 21st century preparation for our students in Lawndale. Right now, none of the schools have coding. And all students should, should be taking coding to equip them with the skills that are needed to be competitive in the global economy. We don't have, we don't have, to my knowledge, we don't have any parent groups that are consistent and ongoing. And, and we also don't, we also don't talk enough about the data, such as what the English and math is. For the last two years, the English has stayed, the English state data has stayed constant, stagnant at 59% and the math is at 38%, which is extremely low. So, those are very much concerns for, for me as a parent and as an educator, but especially as a parent that has three children in the district.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Morales, you get this question next. Did we lose Mr. Morales?
Uh,
There you go.
Okay, thank you so much. So most important, after, you know, learning from, uh, our, uh, COVID-19, uh, problems, we need to make sure that we have, uh, safety plans uh, in place for any future catastrophes. Um, I know that, uh, in our schools, we do, uh, drill for earthquakes and fires, but there are other issues too that, you know, that needs to, uh, make sure that are in place. So, uh, we can avoid, um, future problems. And, um, the other thing that I feel like we need to, uh, work more is on the, uh, the emotional support for our students. I know they're at home, uh, they, they need a lot of, uh, help and, uh, we need to make sure that we support them 100%. And so, uh, and we have to make sure that, you know, uh, we get our students back on campus, uh, in a very safe manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Church, you get the question next.
Sorry, could you repeat the question for me?
Sure. What are some, what are some needs that must be priorities for our school district?
Well, I think we can tackle, uh, some of the, 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 kind of the low hanging fruit. We don't have a lot of after-school programs or anything at all. We have RAP and that is great, but I don't think that it's sufficient for every student. I think that we need to try to bring in some, some extracurricular activities for the students after class instruction is done. Um, some of the easiest ways of doing that is we can partner with Laco. They have a bunch of programs that we can incorporate into our school district that will give the kids different avenues to explore math and science and la, English and all kinds of things. And as Mr. Gamboa mentioned earlier, we can partner with some of the people around our area, like SpaceX or Northrop Grumman, uh, and really bring them in and see what they can provide for our students so that they can thrive.
Okay, thank you. And now Ms. Bures, this is your question.
Hi, thank you. Well, some of our current challenges are the social injustices, um, equity for all students. We need to start giving our kids the tools to deal with this. Um, our declining enrollment, we need to address that. Um, student and parent support with distance learning. Um, we, we have every, we've been trying to reach out and like through class dojo, uh, so that the students or the parents can talk to the teachers and, and seek help for whatever they have. Um, we need to make sure that our students are engaged while in distance learning. Um, the emotional support, nutrition and health support. Some of, you know, make sure that the kids are getting fed and, and taken care of. And then of course, getting our kids back on campus. That's the one thing I think that they all miss, um, is that interaction with each other. So, um, those are some of our challenges that we've got to face.
Okay, thank you. So in the next question, we are starting with Mr. Morales. And it's kind of long, but I think you'll get it. Many of the school site neighbors are frequently experiencing an all-night alarm that goes off on Fridays at both Anderson and/or Rogers schools. The police, fire and school sites have not been successful in stopping or remediate, remedying the alarms when they go off and stay on all night. Will you look into this matter if elected?
Yes, of course, uh, this is a, a matter that we have discussed with the superintendent before. And, uh, unfortunately, uh, for reasons that is, that are out of our, um, hands, uh, we haven't been able to, to fix that. But it's, uh, it's work in progress and I do apologize for all those parents who, uh, have to go through this, uh, unneeded noise. And, uh, if elected, I'm going to make sure that that's one of our priorities to, um, of something that needs to be fixed right away. So it doesn't continue and it stopped right away.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Church, what are your thoughts on this alarm situation?
Uh, to be honest with you, I wasn't aware that it was even happening, but that's something that should absolutely be fixed immediately. There's no reason that, uh, people in the community should be having to hear that from the school every night. It's, it's very disturbing. It's going to keep them up. So no, I, I don't know what the logistical reasons are as to why it hasn't been fixed, but that is absolutely something I would look into immediately to being addressed because there's no reason why it shouldn't be fixed.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Bures.
Thank you. Um, yes, I, I, uh, agree with Mr. Morales. I, uh, we have addressed this many times. Um, I'm not aware of why, if it's still happening, um, I hadn't heard, so I assumed that the problem was, um, taken care of. Unfortunately, things like this don't necessarily come to the Board of Trustees. Um, usually someone will call the school or the fire department or the police department will get in touch with the superintendent. So it's not always something that as a trustee, um, that we will, you know, have or address. It's, it's really not our job for that. But of course, if it's happening, um, I would definitely, you know, want to make sure that the superintendent is addressing it and getting it fixed. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And number four, Mr. Gamboa.
Yes, this is also happening at, at Mark Twain. Um, I don't know if it as, as much as at the other schools, but there should be some accountability and somebody should be communicating with the community and the parents saying, "I'm sorry, this is happening. We're trying to work on this. This is the plan. I want to hear your, I want to hear your input." There's just, I'll, I'll sound like a broken record. There's not enough outreach from the board, from the current board. There's not enough outreach to the parents to hear their input when issues come up. And there just needs to be more and there should be some responsibility at some, at some level. Um, I, um, the, the communicate, there's a serious gap in communication that often is just not addressed. Uh, asking parents to just go to the board meetings is not enough. That's, that's not being proactive, that's being reactive. And there should be a lot more communication and support, even for the administrators at, at the, at the school sites.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this new question, we're going to start with Mr. Church. How do you plan to engage with parents? In what ways will you plan to engage with parents?
Well, one of the ways that I plan to engage was to, what I, what I wanted to do was create a, a community forum, like maybe once a quarter, once every couple of months, and really have all of the parents and people in the community come and voice their concerns to us. Uh, board meetings are typically where the board tells the, the community everything that's going on, what decisions are being made. But I kind of want to reverse that and allow all of the community members to tell us what their concerns are, what has been happening and see what we can do to fix them. Bring them out to the rest of the board members, have them figure out like, if they're having similar issues in their communities and then we can come up with solutions. Um, during COVID, that's difficult, obviously, but we can have panels similarly to this one where parents can come on and just talk about it. Just getting out there and communicating is important. And whatever form that takes, um, no matter what the circumstances are, it's important to do so.
Thank you. And Ms. Bures, this is now your question.
I forgot who I was going after. Sorry.
I know, it happens because you get.
Yeah, exactly. Well, um, it, parent engagement is something that we have established at each and every one of our schools. We have ELAC, we have DLEC, we have DPAC, we have PTA, we have Site Council, uh, we have Family University. Um, each school has a community liaison. Um, I don't know how many more things. We, oh, we are also, uh, starting an African-American, um, advisory committee. So we're doing, I feel, as much as we can to reach out to the parents. These are all things that have just been new in the last few years. So, um, it's not our responsibility, our job is the what. It's the board and the, the cabinet's job to figure out how. So as a board member, it is just our job to set the vision, set the goals and, and then let the cabinet and all the people that are working for LESD to do their job. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Gamboa, this is now your question to answer.
Yes, um, I will, I will start by, by having an open door policy as a board member where, where I would make myself available on a regular, consistent basis outside of the mandated, um, mandated compliance. As a school administrator, a lot of the stuff that, that's been mentioned is compliance, such as the LCAB, those are a lot of compliance focus groups that have to be done. There isn't varied or none or, or very little, um, parent engagement when it comes to how to, how to prepare for the COVID-19, um, um, uh, or emergency plans in the future. There's some of the stuff that's been talked about, there's no focus groups for that. And so we need to have it. And, um, you know, when the, um, we need to engage parents to also get ideas from them and see what solutions they might have to some of the problems. We don't have, we're not going to have all the, all the answers and we need to continuously be on, on the ground, on the streets, engaging parents all the time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and now Mr. Morales, this is your question to answer.
Hey, yeah, thank you so much. So, um, one thing that I always remember is that the school board, uh, members are elected, uh, to work for the parents. So board members can truly benefit from parent experience and perspectives. I am always open, I have always been open to, uh, new ideas, new ways of, uh, creating, uh, high expectation for all our students. As a parent myself, I be, be, becoming an elected member of the school board is one of the most effective ways to en- ensure my voice and the voices of all parents is heard. I wanted to make it a priority to communicate with parents about what is happening in the child's classroom, schools and district. I think it is important to engage in a two-way com- communication. I have to be a great listener, not just a one that speaks a lot. I ask what parents think is working well and what is not. But most important, encourage parents to be school volunteers. Join one of, or all the committees such as DLEC, ELAC, SSC, DPAC, uh, and soon the African-American District Parent Committee. Your voices matter and I encourage all the parents to be involved in your child's education and success. And you know what? I'm going to be there with you and for you.
Thank you. Okay, so Ms. Bures, you get to tech, take the next question first. Is Longdale School District in jeopardy financially as the state bu- budget looks like it will suffer next year?
Um, is our budget, no, our budget is, we are actually, um, we're fiscally sound. We have always been, uh, very frugal as far as, uh, where we spend our money, how we spend our money. Um, we get updates all the time, we, we get, uh, audited on a regular basis. We go through those audits, um, and we have a reserve. So, um, I don't. And we won't be taken alone this year. So we, we, um, we have been fiscally sound. So I hope that, um, we shouldn't have any problems, um, that I see actually coming up.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Gamboa.
Yes, um, I believe the district, if nothing is done regarding losing close to 300 students just this year alone, is in, is, is going to face, there's going to be some serious implications to that financially. If you just do some, some simple math, that's oh, close to, over, close to or over, um, $3 million just for losing 300 stu-, I mean, 3, $3 million for losing 300 students. This year, as, as a, as a principal, yes, every school gets to, um, gets, gets the, the benefit of the doubt in regards to ADA, using the numbers from last year. We don't know what's going to happen, but I can tell you that losing 300 students is a serious concern. One that I don't think there's, there's a plan for, um, at least as a parent in the community. I don't know of it. And there is no focus group to have ongoing conversations about how that is going to be addressed because it cannot just be put to the side.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so next, um, Mr. Morales.
Okay, yes, thank you so much. Um, so, uh, the implementation of distance learning, the reopening of schools in the near future is and will be expensive. We all know that. So first and foremost, uh, we need to make sure we have, uh, new health and safety measures, uh, in place. And that means implementing new procedures, uh, disinfecting facilities, uh, purchasing, uh, PPE and implementing new, uh, protocols. Uh, and that, of course, will increase the, the cost of doing businesses. But we're, you know, we have to be careful with our budget. We have to go back and review it, ask questions, uh, understand every allocation. We must pay close attention to our spendings. And we have to make sure that we are accounted for every dollar being used. Uh, I will ask to prioritize our expenditures by needs and wants. I am not in favor of classroom cuts, uh, cuts, layoffs and furloughs. So again, uh, we just have to be real careful with our, uh, how we spend our, our dollars.
Okay, thank you. And now Mr. Church, this is your question.
Uh, I was actually curious about this myself. So I, I asked the board this, uh, not too long ago, just to get a sense of exactly where we are. And I think we seem to be pretty solid at the moment. Uh, there's at least $17 million in reserves for these types of, uh, these types of issues. But I do agree with, uh, what Mr. Gamboa mentioned. Having students leave the district en masse is, is an issue and we will lose a lot of money that way. And we need to find ways of keeping the students interested and figuring out why they're leaving, why the parents are pulling them out. Uh, we need to provide more programs so that they will want to stay and that they don't need to go elsewhere, uh, to fulfill those needs. Uh, in addition to that, Prop 15 is on the ballot right now. And if that passes, uh, Ellie, uh, we will get about $3.7 million directly funded to the district that we can use for a multitude of, of things.
Okay, thank you. So the next question goes to, uh, Mr. Gamboa. You go first this time. And the question is, how will you help the homeless and food insecure students in the district if you're elected?
Um, I, I've said it in, in other questions, being on the ground and, and just, um, talking to them, seeing the different options that are out there. Actually, when COVID-19 hit, um, I was, uh, as the principal of a sc- of a school in South LA, a lot of our families were in serious need of just groceries. And so we fundraised, we, I talked to some donors, I talked to other people, talked to companies and we were able to gather enough resources, money, gift cards for groceries. And I, I have videos where we're delivering the groceries during the pandemic on a regular basis. We were calling the families, we were calling the parents, um, uh, the students, checking in with them, seeing what they need, really being on the ground because you can't, you can't support somebody that's in, in, in a, in a dire situation or in, um, is homeless, needs food. You can't support them from afar. You have to be there. That's the only way it's going to get done. And I've done it, just did it, um, and will continue to do it. And I love, I love being able to, um, to, to support in any which, which way possible, um, leaving no stone unturned.
Thank you. And, um, Mr. Morales, you go, this is your question next.
Yes, thank you. So, um, uh, the, uh, the homeless situation, the homeless situation, it's a, a big issue, not only in our district but, uh, across, uh, the state. And we really do need to, uh, pay a lot of attention to it. I know that in our district, we have a great, uh, student support service, uh, with a great team that, uh, goes out, reach out to the homeless. Uh, they, uh, provide them with vouchers. Uh, they give them information to places where they can go and, you know, stay. And so they also, uh, get food vouchers. And, uh, we just, uh, you know, want to make sure that they, they have a stable home so their students can succeed. And, uh, because if you're hungry and if you don't have a home, the list of your worries is school, you know? So we have to make sure that that is, becomes our priority.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Church, this is your question next. Okay, thank you. Mr. Church, this is your question next.
I absolutely believe we need to find ways of of helping these students get doing by doing food drives, by helping them get food and with tech needs and things like that. They may not have access to Wi-Fi. I know that the the district provided hotspots, but if they don't have a place to plug them in, I don't really know what good that's going to do. So we need to find solutions for that. Part of what I've been doing during the pandemic is with my nonprofit, we sold masks and we were raising money and we had students who didn't have computers and we took those money from sewing the masks, bought computers and gave them out so that they could use them for whatever they needed. And I think more engagement like that is what's necessary, really trying to find ways that we can help these students because it's not their fault and we need to help them succeed in school.
Thank you. And Ms. Bures, what are your thoughts on this one?
Hi. Well, our student support system, student support services, Jorge Orojo and his group have done fabulous, fabulous work with making sure that our students either have food vouchers, either have, they made sure that they had backpacks and school supplies to start school with. There's been a number of things. Our food services group has made sure that you can come by the schools anytime, you know, at certain days, at certain schools to pick up breakfast, lunch and dinner. And for that matter, you only had to be under eighteen years old. So I think that we we we're, we can always do better, always. We can always learn, we can always grow. So I'm just hoping that if there are more needs out there that we're made aware of them and that we can continue to help them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this next question, and you know, are we supposed to go till eight thirty? These are usually ninety minutes. I think so, right? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to check because all of a sudden I panicked and it's because we started late, so, okay. Next question goes to Mr. Morales first. So when you hear the phrase, all lives matter, how do you feel or and react?
Well, yes, it is true that all lives matter, but most important nowadays, we are dealing with Black Lives Matter. And that is a a movement that it affects every one of us. And so I think that, you know, if we are not developing a relationship with our students, if we are not culturally responsive to their needs, it doesn't matter how much teaching you you may want to do in our schools, nothing is going to happen. Students are not going to be engaged. What we have to do is let students talk about their experiences and let them say what they would like to change. So we have to, you know, just be creative and bring resources to our classrooms. We need to invite guest speakers and community members to talk to our students about racism and racial inequalities. And so maybe bring district art contests as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Mr. Church, this is now your question.
So All Lives Matter is a movement that was created to run counter to Black Lives Matter. So the movement itself, I don't support anything that is trying to suppress somebody else trying to get their rights heard. So what I'm about is that I think that every student matters and we need to approach everyone equally, and it doesn't matter really what's going on, but the Black Lives Matter movement in particular is not just about black lives. They focus on that a lot. But they've helped out different people all over the country in various ways, and I don't think that's really known very often. But I think that every student, no matter what their ethnic background is, no matter where they're from, needs to be heard, and that's why I'm also fighting for equity on the campus. In every single way, we need to teach ethnic studies in the school. We need to let everybody's voice be heard so that they can feel comfortable into the in the classroom.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Bures.
Thank you. Well, as everybody has said, we we definitely need to give our children, our students, the tools to combat prejudice and injustice. And nobody, nobody should be treated any better than anybody else because everybody matters. We we need to acknowledge that there are injustices out there. We need to have conversations and find ways to change it and teach our children. We need to teach the kids from day one that everybody is equal, everybody is the same, and no one is any better than anybody else. So from the beginning, we need to make sure that they have the tools to combat the injustices and things that are out there. There's a professor that has written a book, I can't remember her name, it's Ms. Taylor, that is a great book about combating injustices. Thank you, I see my stop sign.
That time flew by, didn't it?
Yeah, it does.
So, Mr. Gamboa, this is now your turn at this question. What are your thoughts?
My thoughts are that since since things have been happening with with everything in the last six months, we have not, as as parents, we have not been engaged into, this is an oppo-, this is an opportunity to bring our school community closer, to have dialogue, to have discussions, and we have not had that. And opportunities have not been there, and and that's not good. This is, this is a very I every day I have to talk to my 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 kids, I have questions at my school. We are redesigning our curriculum to have ongoing discussions. Not just to, not just to kind of say, oh, we talked about it and move on. This is a real opportunity to make change. And change across the board, not just kind of, okay, let's try it, let's try it for for the moment, and then it goes away. This is a real opportunity that we need to take a lot, I feel a lot more serious. And and that will be evident when it becomes a more consistent conversation amongst the community and the parents.
Thank you. Okay, so I do have several other questions, but I think I'm going to check in with Pamela to see if your constituents who are are there, I mean, we had these questions that were sent in by email by however your PTA president. But Pamela, I want to check in with you on the chat box. Are there some questions that you think we should ask now?
I have a couple of questions. So how many can we allot for?
Um, let's see. So I would, two for sure. If you have three, that would be okay too.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry, one second. So, Mr. Church, you're going to take this question first.
Okay, so this is the first question. In addition, and the superintendent make astronomical salaries for a very small district. And none of them offer to reduce their salaries to help with the current situation and reduce layoffs. So do you have any feedback on that?
So, Mr. Church, do you want the question repeated? Pam, you broke up a little bit.
Yeah, I was going to ask for that.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a a statement and then basically asking for each candidate's response. So it says, in addition, the assistant superintendents and the superintendent make astronomical salaries for a very small district, and none of them offer to reduce their salaries to help with the current situation and reduce layoffs. Do you have feedback to that?
I think that's a valid point. I was not in support of the classified staff layoffs. I did not see the reason for it. We have a huge reserve. We have seventeen millions, as I mentioned before. And they easily could have at least attempted to keep that going for a while, to keep that staff solvent during a pandemic. As for the superintendent's salary, I agree that maybe that is a discussion that can be made, that maybe they can reduce during this time while we are all trying to to fight through this and doing distance learning. Because they do make very large salaries and it could stand to be pulled back a little bit. But that is definitely a conversation worth having, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bures, what are your thoughts on the salaries and reducing them?
Well, Mr. Church had mentioned our our money that we
If you could just refrain.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I really
What all I was saying is that he had mentioned the reserve. That is very true. We do have a reserve. And as far as the the salary that the the superintendent and the the assistant superintendents make were all things that were negotiated and we can't just say, oop, you can't have it no more. The only reason that we had some layoffs was because we didn't have kids on on campus. So we didn't need our new dates. We didn't need, you know, people in the offices. There was just a lot of things that unfortunately, because we weren't on school grounds, that we we couldn't, we did pay them for like three months. But there there's a lot of things also that each category, money has to come out of different categories. It can't, it's just not one big general fund. So
Okay, and Mr. Gamboa, what are your thoughts on this question?
I I think during during this difficult time, it would have, at least, having a discussion, again, having a discussion about it and including opening it up for some for some feedback or input would have gone a long way. I think this, the way it was handled, you know, it 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 divided, it divided people. It didn't bring people together. And so it could have been handled a lot better, even if, yeah, like there's there's I'm not trying to take food off anybody's plate, but at the same time, some people just lost their jobs. And when, like, these are some very high salaries that there could have been at least some appreciation towards the the classified staff that now was put in a whole different situation unlike other other staff members. So I think it would have gone a long way, and and it would have been a a great gesture in bringing the community, our school community, closer during during these difficult times.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Morales, this is now for you to give your thoughts on.
Yes, thank you so much. So I know that there sometime in the summer, we voted on doing some layoffs. But fortunately, most of the the employees that were given those letters, they came back except for about thirty of them. And unfortunately, we haven't bringing them back yet because they are employees who work in, they do ground student supervision, new names. And so as the students come back, they will be coming back too. And as far as the superintendent's salary, it's an average salary for the size of our district.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the next question, Ms. Bures, you're going to start with the next question, and Pamela, could you give us another question from the constituents?
Sure. One moment. With the popularity of the dual immersion program and the increase in family engagement that comes with people desiring the school that hosted, would there be a plan to introduce the program into all of the school districts? And how will the board play a role in making that happen?
Ms. Bures, you're still muted.
I'm going to assume, Athena, that they mean all the schools, not all the school districts. Because I can only speak for Longdale. It has been an extremely popular program, and we did finally get it over into the middle school as well, and it would be fabulous if we could bring it into all of our schools, and we have talked about it in many, many board meetings. There's many factions that come to play in that is that we need the teachers who are, can can speak both the English and and the Spanish and move on up through the grades. We also need to buy the books. So all of those things play into effect, but we have talked about it many, many times because we have so many families interested, and it's it's such a wonderful program that I would love to see it at every school.
Thank you. Mr. Gamboa, this is now for you to answer this question.
I feel it's something that that hasn't been, it hasn't been addressed. Many parents have voiced to me, my 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 kids, all three of them are in the dual immersion. And I know many neighbors and many parents in my neighborhood, in Longdale, that have gone that have not gotten in and have not gotten an explanation or kind of some kind of opportunity to, you know, engage in some meaningful dialogue. If you look at student achievement, Mark Twain has, for the elementary schools, has the highest student achievement. It's not by coincidence in regards to the more you offer, just like taking kids to visit colleges and and whatnot. Opportunities like that increase student achievement, and it's something that should, it should be looked at all the time. It shouldn't be dismissed, and it should not just be put off to the side and saying, oh, we can't do it. We need, we need to explore it more and we need to be taken more seriously.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Morales.
Yeah, thank you. So at the beginning, I said that I am a fourth grade Spanish dual immersion teacher. So that's what I believe, you know, I I just don't think that, you know, it should be just one school that provides dual immersion, but all the schools in Longdale. Because, you know, I am a bilingual person and I know that it is very important, especially if you want to compete across the world, you know, we need to be at least bilingual. I we'd love to, if we can be trilingual, but it's a popular program, and I know that a lot of parents are interested. And is that something that I will definitely push more, make sure that, you know, the the program is offered not just one school, but many other schools in our district.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Church, what do you think about this?
I think we can pretty much all agree that it is a fantastic program. I myself tried to get my daughter into it, but was unsuccessful. I'm sure plenty of parents can can sympathize with. And I think we should need to get it done on every site if we can. And really, it it comes down to the teachers. The teachers need to feel supported, and if they feel supported, then we'll bring in more educators, more people who can contribute to this program, and then maybe we'll be able to move it out into into all the different schools, and I think that it is absolutely essential to to bring it in. It's one of the programs, there's a lot of other programs that we should be funding as well, to be taken care of. We have a GATE program that's not getting the attention it deserves at all. So there there are things we need to be looking into to give all the kids the resource.
Okay, thank you. So the next question, we're going to start with Mr. Gamboa, and let me check with Pamela. Do you have another question from the constituents?
Yes, this is a a basic question, but a good question.
Great.
So the question is, of all the people on the panel tonight running for this seat, how many are members of the PTA in their trustee district?
Okay, this is going to go fast.
Member at Twain and Rogers.
At what and what?
At where my student, where my children are students at, at Mark Twain and Will Rogers.
Okay, good. Your first word's cut out, so, okay, thank you very much. Mr. Morales.
Yes, of course. I think I I believe in PTA. I think it's a very important program in our schools. It brings a lot of benefits to to it, and so I have supported every PTA in the whole school district. So I am a member of every school in our district.
So you're a member of the PTA, I think, was the question, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay, and Ms. Bures.
I am as well a member of every school's PTA.
Okay, wonderful. That went fast. Okay, thank you very much. There's nothing you want to add to that, I suppose. There's nothing you want to add to that, I suppose?
It's just kind of been our practice. It's not mandatory or anything. But as a trustee, because we do support every school, even though my trustee area is trustee area three, which encompasses Carson, FDR, and Twain, obviously, I support every school in Longdale because that's what my job entails. So just being in a trustee area is strictly for the election purposes. It's not for any other purpose other than just for elections.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next question, we will start with Mr. Morales. And Pamela, do you have another question? If not, I can pull off this list.
No, we have more.
Okay. And I'd prefer to go with the live audience who took their evening to be with us than these questions that are a little bit too vague, so.
Okay, so if students eventually go back to school, either hybrid or or everyone is safe, more specifically, what are your thoughts about having students and faculty getting tested for COVID?
Okay, she cut off at the beginning, so can she repeat that again, please?
Yeah, Pamela, can you repeat the, well, the whole question? Because you were bleeped out in the beginning.
Okay, my apologies.
I'm from.
If students eventually go back to school, either hybrid or full-time, how will you ensure everyone is safe? More specifically, what are your thoughts about having students and faculty getting tested for COVID?
Okay, so let me start with the having tested for COVID-19. I think it is very important that we are all tested to make sure that we stop the disease from, you know, spreading more. But as far as reopening schools, I know that they are families who want their children back to school. And we have others who prefer distance learning and/or hybrid program. But first and most important, we need to listen to the experts. We need to listen to the CDC guidelines, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, and the County Office of Education. Our plan and action should be based on their guidelines. I know there's a need to bring some students back. And there are teachers willing to serve small groups of students. But I truly believe it should be on a voluntary basis and not mandated down by the district. Remember, safety first. Let's work together to be a model and an example to open the schools to the most needed first, as long as it is safe for all students and teachers and staff.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Church?
First, I was actually skipped on the PTA question, so I'm gonna answer that a bit here. Yes, I am a member of the PTA on the side of William Green.
Oh, my God, I skipped you. I'm so sorry. Oh, my God, I'm so sorry.
Don't worry about it, it's okay.
Okay, so Monica, don't count that time. Start the time now.
In regards to bringing kids back to school and having the faculty and everything get tested, I think that's absolutely worth consideration. I know there are a lot of parents who are adamant about bringing their kids back to school and a lot of parents who are not. So we really need to get feedback from the community on what their preferences are and why. And also follow all of the guidelines of the health experts. Because I don't have a medical degree, so I need them to tell me when it's safe, when the city is low enough where it seems like it's a risk worth taking, and whether or not the parents, which model they want. Do they want hybrid? Do they want everybody to come in? And when they do come back, no matter what model it is, I do think that some of the staff should be tested on a pretty regular basis, just to make sure that we're doing everything that we can in addition to the cleaning that the classified staff will provide every single day.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Burris?
I think you. Absolutely. I don't know what the, like, everybody was saying. We definitely need to follow the CDC guidelines. I'm not a doctor as well, so I don't know. I want them to tell me what is safe. We definitely have to make sure that the school is safe. Safety first. We need to maybe take some surveys and find out what the parents, I think I just asked this at our last board meeting. How do the teachers feel about coming back hybrid? Are they ready? Are they prepared for that? Are they feeling safe with that? Do the parents feel safe? And if there was a way that we could set up, I know my job, we get tested every two weeks. But if there was a way to set something up like that, I absolutely don't think that that would be a problem at all. And I think it might help people feel safe. So absolutely, whatever, there's my stop sign again.
Darn stop sign. You can always finish the thought. Okay, so next would be Mr. Gamboa with this question.
Yes, so I want to just echo what some have said, safety first. You cannot ever compromise that. At the same time, what, this plan that at some point needs to take place or happen, it's not gonna happen if there's no consistent dialogue again. At my school, part of the reentry plan or part of when we were exploring hybrid models, it was parent involvement, not surveys. Meeting with them via Zoom, getting their input, hearing their ideas. A lot of the concerns from everybody and why students or parents or teachers are afraid is because of the lack of communication. So if people are feeling a certain ways because there's not transparent, there's no transparency and it's not happening on a regular basis, more transparency is gonna lead to more communication. At one point, we're all gonna have to take a step forward together. And we have to do it through communication first before any of that happens. And so transparency and communication.
Thank you. Okay. So we have time for one more general question, then we're gonna move to closing remarks, sadly. Okay, so Pamela, do you have another one from the constituents out there?
I do. I'm just trying to make sure we don't repeat ourselves.
Yeah, pick a good one.
Okay, so it's kind of going back, but I don't think we clearly addressed it. One moment. Okay. What do you see as the role and relationship that should exist between the school board and the certificated and classified union leaders?
Okay, and I forgot to mention, but Mr. Church, this one is yours to start with.
Can you repeat the question one more time, please?
Sure. Let me go back to it. What do you see as the role and relationship that should exist between the school board and the certificated and classified union leaders?
Well, they're members of the community, so I believe that we should have an open conversation with them about their concerns as well. A lot of what happens is directed by the board and meted out by the superintendent and the cabinet. So I'm open to conversations with anyone about anything that they want to talk to me about. So if they come to me and they have a concern and they are worried about something, I'm always there to listen and provide any feedback or any assistance that I can give them. And I think that should be open for, that applies to everything. We should always be open to hearing anybody because they are people in our community. They're not just nameless, faceless individuals. They are people that we know. They're parents. They're our neighbors. We need to be open and hearing their concerns.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Burris, this would be your question now.
Could I have her repeat the question again?
Sure. Pamela?
Here.
Okay.
My chat box goes away.
Oh.
I apologize. Hold on.
Oh, I see, okay.
What do you see as the role and relationship that should exist between the school board and the certificated, am I saying that correct, and classified union leaders?
Okay. So there's a training that we all go to to follow guidelines that the board is supposed to do. So we definitely have an open conversation with them at any time. I'm open to anybody coming and speaking with me if there's a problem. The board actually sets the vision and goals for the district. We adopt the policies. We hire and evaluate the superintendent. We work with the superintendent to fulfill responsibilities within the district. And we adopt and oversee annual budget. We keep the district focused on learning and achievement for all students. There are other roles of other people, the district, the staff, the cabinet, that actually play a part in speaking with the the certificated and classified union members. But definitely always open to conversations with them, absolutely. We speak with them all the time, so, of course.
Okay, thank you. So next, Mr. Gamboa?
Like I mentioned with other things, there should be a close relationship, obviously, within, staying within any school policies or guidelines. They're stakeholders. We're all stakeholders. Everybody within the school has a right to the transparency, has a right to being engaged in regular communication. And it was, it was good to see that no teachers lost their jobs, that, to my knowledge, and during these difficult times. And it was difficult to see that classified staff lost, some classified staff lost their jobs. If we really want to be a community of schools that is striving to be better in the next, not just now, but in the future, we need to look at finding the third way. Finding the third way where we're really, you know, involving everybody. There's transparency and there's a lot of solution-based conversations happening.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Morales?
Yeah, thank you so much. So years back, I was a volunteer firefighter and the number one thing I learned was teamwork. This is not a job that, you know, only one person can do it. We need every stakeholder accountable. We have to make sure that every person, every staff member feels welcome in our schools because they are a big part of, you know, teaching our children. So we have to make sure that we create the right climate, you know, to establish a supportive school culture. We have to make sure that they have opportunities to build a career in our schools and to be promoted. So again, if we want students to be successful, we need all of us. And believe me, I think, I love teachers and classified because they do a great job with those students.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, sadly, we've squeezed everything we can into the time that we have together. So we're now gonna move to closing remarks. So this might be just reminding people of your stats. Your background might be a question you want to delve into more. Whatever it is, giving out your website, whatever it is, feel free to do whatever you want with this time. And we are gonna start with Mr. Gamboa and go four, three, two, one. Okay?
Ready?
Yep.
All right, thank you. For parent and community voice, Bo Gamboa. For the last fifteen years, I have been directly involved on the ground firsthand, supporting students, teachers, classified staff, parents, and community. I've worked with special education students, English language learners, foster students. I've proven track record of making schools better and I will advocate for not just the present, but just as important, the future of Longdale schools. And we need a sense of urgency. I just talked about, I pointed out the math scores. Suspensions went up. I can give you the numbers. They went up from ninety-five two years ago to a hundred and twelve. At Rogers, they went from thirty-six to fifty-five in one year. There's a thousand students at Rogers and we only have one assistant principal. As a middle school principal, that is concerning. As evident by the recent COVID-19 impact, we need to be ready for anything that comes our way now and in the future. We need consistent parent and community voice along with more community events that will bring a true sense of community and advocacy. Bo Gamboa for a fresh face with innovative ideas focused on the present and future of Longdale schools. I have served my country, serving five years in the military. I've served fifteen years in county, making schools better. And now I want to serve you, our Longdale school community, as a member of the board. We need to increase math and English scores, provide all of our students with 21st century skills, experiences, and resources that we need for our students in Longdale. And not let them leave for surrounding districts as that is demoralizing for our school community and causes serious financial implications. Bo Gamboa for parent and community voice. Actually, this past week, I've been going door to door, talking to a lot of parents. And I took some of my former students that I helped when they were struggling and now they are having great success at top universities like UCLA and Long Beach State. We need a parent on the board that will be proactive, find innovative solutions, have a sense of urgency, and find resources to bring transformative change to our schools in Longdale. Bo Gamboa for a brighter future. Thank you to everybody that made this possible. Really appreciate it. And I look forward to the future, a better future for Longdale schools.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Burris, it's now your turn to take your two minutes closing remarks.
Thank you. Well, I've lived in Longdale for well over thirty-five years and I've had two successful sons. I have grandchildren and that have attended and are still attending Longdale schools. And I'm deeply, deeply committed to this community and school district. We have been as transparent as we can be. We are constantly trying to find new ways to give our students more. And I'm just saying, I'm proud that I've served the last twelve years. I would love to serve another twelve years, at least another four. So as I said earlier, the current board is very stable and we are extremely devoted to our students and staff members in this community. Each and every one of us believes in lifelong learning. We believe in families, the schools, the community, and we are guided by our integrity, our honesty, our experience, and responsibility to make sure that all our students reach their highest potential. We have also have, we ask questions, we listen to our constituents, we ask our staffs and teachers, and without any bias, we end up doing what's very best for our children. They're our number one reason. We have always put our students first above and beyond anything else. So I'm asking you to please vote for Kathy Burris, trustee area three, for reelection in the Longdale Elementary School District. I just feel that I have more to give and I really enjoy working with the board. I want to continue my work with the board. And with the district, it's a fabulous district. We're the best-known secret, unfortunately. And I feel that the reason that we're losing enrollment is because of COVID. Families have actually moved out of our area. But in closing, I just want to say thank you to our PTA and thank you to the Women's League of Voters for this opportunity tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So Mr. Church, now it's your turn for two-minute closing remarks.
As I mentioned in my opening remarks, I've been, I was in the corporate sector for over twelve years in an executive position. And in that role, I don't believe in passing the buck or blaming somebody else for things that I should be responsible for. And as a member of the board, it is the board's job to set the agenda for the entire district. It is our job to determine what's going to happen and up to the cabinet to figure out the logistics of how to make it happen. So the board's job is to identify areas of concern that need to be addressed. And that's something that I believe we need to focus more on in this district. We need to combat equity in all of its forms, or we need to bring in equity in all of its forms. And it's not just And it's not just about, uh, racial and ethnic lines. Sometimes equity, uh, can be about just marginalized groups who aren't given enough attention. That could be our, our sped students. That could be, uh, our gate students who are just not given the resources they truly need to succeed. Um, but we should bring in ethnic studies as well. It's something that should be introduced in the elementary school level so that every student sees a little bit of themselves in the curriculum. Uh, I believe that is extremely important. Um, and one of the advantages that we have in Longdale is that we're in California. California is, the main industries are tech and art. We should be bringing those things into the district. There's no reason there, there's not after school programs of theater or music or engineering. We should be fostering these kids and giving them the resources to just to thrive. And that's what I'm looking to bring if I get onto the board because I believe in the students. I believe in equity and community engagement and parent voice. So I thank you for your time and hearing me tonight. Um, vote Brandon Church for trustee area five for Longdale Elementary School District.
Thank you, Mr. Church. And finally, we get to hear from Mr. Morales. This is your two, two minutes to finish.
All right, thank you. So, uh, you left, uh, the best for last. Uh, once again, thank you everyone for allowing me to be here and for taking the time to find out who is the best person for school board area five, and that is Adi Morales. Personal integrity, a willingness to listen and an understanding of how a school works are some of the qualities I have brought to the London School, uh, Board of Trustees. I strive for our schools to be a place where our families feel welcome. You know, when we work together, we can achieve a lot. Parents, staff, teachers and administrators, we can continue to provide an excellent education for our students. As an educator myself, I know collaboration with everyone involved in the teaching of our students is the way to continuing to improve academics and provide supportive environment for each child's social and emotional health. As a bilingual and immigrant, I know how important it is to provide opportunities in which our students and families can embrace every part of their identity for more inclusiveness, bilinguality and multicultural awareness, especially to the dual immersion program. I believe our district is doing a great job and I know we can do better. I ask that you allow me to keep working with a stable and effective board trustees. You can be assured that I will always do my best for our students and community. I pledge to you that I will make my decisions in the best interest of all our students and community. I humbly request your support and vote on election date. Gracias a todos por estar esta noche con nosotros. Es muy importante estar informados para tomar las mejores decisiones. De quién va a ser el próximo miembro de la junta directiva del área cinco. Lo que les puedo yo prometer es que voy a tomar decisiones en el mejor interés de nuestros estudiantes y comunidad. Humildemente les pido su apoyo y su voto para continuar en la mesa directiva del distrito de Longdale. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, that was timed good. Congrats. That was awesome. Okay, so thank you all. Um, now usually if we're in a room, there would be all your favorite people, all your supporters clapping, so I'm representing them. Congrats, everyone. Great job. Great job tonight. Um, so I want to thank the PTA who, uh, arranged this. We, we, you know, we're here to facilitate, but really she put all the work into getting, getting the word out, getting your constituents here. So thank you very much, uh, Madam President. And then, um, thank you to Monica Fredericks, who is our voter chair service, uh, voter service chair. And also our timer. It's very difficult to watch that timer over and over again and to force you guys to show up. So thank you, Monica, for all you do for the league, right? And, um, just as a reminder, we're going to have this video available for you on the YouTube channel, which is the same as our, uh, website address. It's LWV Torrance area. And usually it's a couple of days. He's really fast at editing, um, editing the video and getting it, uh, sound done. You know, making the sound nice in the intro outro, but we don't edit a single minute of what goes on as far as what the speeches. So if you ever see a video that's edited that says the league, it is not the league. We never truncate, manipulate, change, any of that, right? It's the full video. Um, so, and I think that's it. So thank you all for coming. My name again is Athena Paquette-Carmier. I'm your moderator and I want to thank you all for making this such a successful evening. Have a great, great night and thank you for the, the league.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.